I now call to order the Budget Work Session of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, Ms. Jacobs.
Maryland, who's this?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Terapany.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Here.
I'd like to remind to everyone that the purpose for tonight's meeting is for the Board of Commissions to study issues, to gather and to analyze information, and to clarify questions. No votes are conducted during the work session. No public comments will be allowed tonight on the budget, however, will be allowed during the two public hearings that we have scheduled on September 7th and September 15th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. The first item on the agenda is to propose budget fiscal year 2022 presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. And as you know, this is the first budget workshop for the fiscal year 2022 budget. Just a little history on the budget. For us, it's been going on for five, six months already, but in February, the departments started keying in their budgets. In March, we developed the payroll for the budget. In April, the revenue projections, we projected those. All funds have been balanced, not using any unassigned fund balance. I'm sorry, all funds have been balanced. No unassigned fund balance has been used in the general fund. And May through July, there were Budget Advisory Committee reviewed the budget, met with the departments. They spent about three days going line by line in all the department's budgets. And I just got to thank the departments. You know, they've gone through their budgets, made cuts. Budget Advisory Committee's gone through them and made some ideas, and cuts where necessary. Just the budget books you're seeing, we used to, years ago, we just used to have three, you know, one budget book. It used to just be this one big detailed budget book with the three-ring binder, but 300 pages there. Now we got this other one. It's an executive summary with another 300 pages if you didn't have enough to read and stuff. But this detailed book, you know, the advantage of that one is, whoops, sorry, wrong button. You know, if you want to see the justify, you know, line item justifications for expenditures, you know, that we've got that in that budget. Also more information on payroll and personnel in this budget book. Then we get into the executive summary book, which is basically summarizing everything that's in that detailed budget book. I just wanted to point out, we were trying to keep, you know, improving the budget book to keep you more information so you can make your decisions and stuff. Like I say, this budget, this executive summary just used to be about 100 pages up until last year, but now it's 300 pages. So we keep trying to put some more in it and give you more information. I just wanted to point out a couple reports that are new this year. I highlighted the executive summary, pages one to 11. It tries to summarize everything if you're trying to find out, you know, what's going on in the budget. A new report is major revenue sources of the city, pages 24 through 28. It basically is just trying to show the major revenue sources, what the history of them for five years, and how they go about calculating them. Another new report is the General Fund Department reports, and which provides more detail on the departments, individual line items or their personnel in there. And then we go down to all the separate departments, special revenue funds, capital projects, sanitation fund, water, sewer, water sewer impacts, marina, stormwater, golf course, internal service, and then capital improvement program. A little bit more on the capital improvement program. It's in like, it's in the back, the executive summary. But one good report I highlighted here, if you want to see all the CIP projects on two pages, pages 306 and 307, has all the CIP projects. And then what these reports are, is what makes up the CIP is the individual fund reports with five-year projections on each one of those individual funds projecting out five years. And then I went and highlighted this report. If you want a report that just shows all capital outlay by fund, that's this report down here, 325 through 327. And then on the very bottom, capital requests not in the budget, pages 330 through 332. And just to give you a summary of the total city budget for 2022, it's 68.7 million. Last year, it was 63.2 million, for an increase of 5.5 million, an 8.7% increase. I'd like to show the five largest funds which make up the city budget, which is 90%. We got the general fund at 28.1 million, 40%, almost 41% of the total city budget. Last year, it was 26.7, a $1.3 million increase, 1.3, yeah, increase, 5.02%. Water and sewer fund this year, 21.2 million, or for next year, 30% of the total city budget. Last year was 18.9 million, a 2.3, almost $2.4 million increase, mostly capital, an increase of 12.71%. Sanitation fund, 6.3 million, 9.2% of the total city budget. Last year was 6.2, $81,000 increase, 1.3% increase. Penny fund, 4.6 million, 6.78% of the budget, 3.5 million last year, a $1.1 million increase, about 31% increase. Stormwater fund, 1.8 million in this budget, 2.7% of the total city budget, 1.7 million last year, increase of 95,000, 5.43% increase, and as likes this, 5.5 million increase on the total city budget, 2.6 million is made up of capital outlay. Some assumptions within the budget, pay increases for general employees funded at 3%. Police and fire union increases are per their respective contracts. Fortunately, we have health insurance premium, no increase, dental insurance, no increase. Police and fire pensions are at the actual required contribution. General pension has not changed, it's still 8.7%. Workers' compensation, we, I just put in an estimate of 10%. We usually find out what it'll be in mid to late August, but I budgeted 10%. Property insurance, again, we'll find out in mid to late August. I budgeted 10% for that. Getting into the general fund, like I say, it's 28 million, 26.7 last year, it's an increase of 1.3 million, 5% increase, mostly due to pay increases, retirement funding, and workers' compensation. General fund revenues by type, and that's going to be seen here, like taxes are 15.4 million of the general fund revenues at 55%. And then you've got permit and fees, intergovernmental, charges for services, fines, and interest. General fund expenditures by function, and as you can see, public safety at 16 million, or 57%. And then you've got, I think the second one is a 4.9, which is general government, and then the other categories, culture recreation at 4.4 million, or 16%. General fund expenditures by type, and as you can see, personnel makes up 74% of the general fund budget, or 20.6 million. Operating is 7 million, or 25%. And then we've got capital and grants and transfers. Just some information on revenue projections, property taxes, the taxable values increased 7.3%. We've maintained the same millage rate of 5.37 in the budget book here. That brings in a revenue of 10.9 million in the general fund, which is, that revenue is 39% of the general fund budget. Some more projections, just to give you a little acquainted with them, of major revenue ones, electric and electric utility tax and franchise fees from Duke average about 4.5%. A lot of the other bigger revenues are the contract ones. We have EMS, fire, the school resource officer, and Pinellas, you know, through Pinellas County and the school board. And sales taxes average a projected increase of about 8.3%. Now, I like to show this graph every year. It's what makes up the property taxes, you know, which are the property tax revenue is based up of millage rate, taxable values, which creates the revenues for the general fund. And the history over the last, since 2007, you know, we were at 5.45 for a while. We reduced it to 5.42 about 2017. And 2020, we reduced the millage rate to 5.37, which is what we're still at. The taxable values, when, back in 2008, we were up at 1.9 billion. With the Great Recession, we went down almost in 2013, 1.3 billion, and now we're back up to a little under 2.2 billion. And as for the revenues, you know, coinciding with that, back in 2007, we had $8 million of revenue in the general fund. In 2013, we dipped down to 6.7 million, and now we're back up to 10.9 million. And we'd like to compare ourselves with the other full cities of Tarpon, being a full-service city, being we have a police and fire departments. And so we try to graph, you know, the, you know, the full-service cities with population greater than 20,000, and here's Tarpon Springs. I'm comparing it to 2015. The blue bars are 2015. We are at the millage rate of 5.45. We're down to 5.37. And as you can see, we're the lowest of the, of the full-service cities at 5.37, Pinellas Park, 5.49, Largo, 5.62, and Clearwater, 5.955, and the City of St. Pete, 6.755. And with that, I don't know, the CIP is the second item on the agenda, or if you just, the first item is general fund, if you want me to stop there and get to the CIP later.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to get to that.
Pardon me?
If you want to go ahead and explain it, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's brief. Getting into the CIP, as you can see, we got 11.4 million of CIP projects. The majority, for fiscal year 22, the majority is 6.8 million, which is 6.4 million is water and sewer projects. And we've got public safety at 908,000, and transportation at 2.7 million, and 900,000 culture and recreation. Just probably referenced it earlier, but just explaining the same, where you can find these CIP pages in the budget book, which was mentioned earlier. I won't go over that again. Just to highlight some of the major CIP projects that are, wrong button again, there we go. Public safety, we got police vehicles at 400,000, fire staff vehicle, 60,000. We've got some debt service, one on leases for the ladder truck, 239,000, and then the fire truck, which is in the process of being built, 178,000. Water and sewer, we got future water wells, 850,000. Solar energy efficiency, 650,000. Water pipe replacement, 350,000. Replace water line under alternate 19 bridge, 950,000. And lift station rehab construction, 1.1 million. I believe that's at the Lyman Huey Lift Station. Stormwater, we got a new inspection camera, 106,000. Transportation, we got sidewalks, 100,000. Brick street and road reconstruction, 300,000. We've got the Sponge Docks flood abatement program, 1.7 million, which is offset by a grant. We got Mango Street Phase Two, 625,000. And again, the cultural recreation, we got the sports complex lighting and field improvements, 400,000. We're hoping to get a grant on that, but we're still trying to find out. And we got library improvements, 500,000, and I believe Kerry is trying for a grant on that one. And so there's 8.5 million of the 11.4 million of the CIP. Just, we always like to look at the penny fund, and these are the projects, a lot of the ones I just said, that are in the penny fund. You know, the police vehicles, the fire, the Sponge Docks, Mango Street, brick reconstruction, sports complex, cultural. But we still have 1.3 million of, you know, available in the penny fund for capital projects. Just wanted to highlight that. And with that, this is a five-year projection for 2022, 23, 24, 25, 26. So we got the 1.3 million available for capital projects in the penny, as it currently sits, and we still have an ending fund balance with that subtracted out of 428,000. Getting on to the CRA, that's the last one I've got on this presentation, since it's on the agenda tonight, but I'll go through it. Just a little bit on the CRA, if you didn't know, is created by Florida statutes back in 2001. It lasts for 30 years. Approximatory alternate 19 from mirrors the Sponge Docks, and one to two blocks east and west of alternate 19. Back in the base year when it was created, the taxable value was a 41,37,900. Taxable values over the base year each year for city and the county portion go into the CRA. We take the city portion, we put it in there, and the county, we send them an invoice, and they send up their portion. That's why it's called tax increment financing here. The property taxes this year, CRA, went up 9.44% for the CRA area. In the budget, we're still made, we've got them 5.37 millage rate. The city portion, based on the 9.44, and the taxable values for the CRA over that base year, is a 322,000 coming from the city. And when we build a county, we'll send them a bill for 321,000 for their portion. Sort of the same information, it's just graphically just showing the revenues, and of course, it's 50/50 between the county portion and the city portion. CRA expenditures, the way they currently sit in the budget, we've got 104,000 for personnel, 78,000 for operating, we've got the $100,000 for facade grants, loan repayment, 100,000 for the property purchased down by the bayou, and then we got reserve for capital, 260,000, which is still available within the CRA. And just another, it's a five-year projection of the CRA for 2022, '23, '24, '25, '26. We got personnel of 104,000, the operating, the available money of 260,000, the grants, the loan repayment, the total expenditures, and we have available the 260,000, plus we still have leftover 249,000 of fund balance with that taken out also. Just information on the upcoming, and this is this, tonight, this first budget workshop. The next one's on the 29th, the Thursday. Third one, if necessary, is on August 12th. The trim notices go out by the county on August 23rd, I believe it's a Monday. September 7th is the first public hearing, I believe it's a Tuesday after Labor Day. The second public, second and final public hearing, it's going to be on the Wednesday, September 15th. And then we start all over again. We have the new fiscal year starting October 1st. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Harry, we appreciate the presentation. It's always very informative. Mr. Licouris, I want to thank you. I want to thank everyone involved for preparing this budget, including staff and the Budget Advisory Committee. Again, this year, we have a very good budget, without using any emergency funds, and keeping the same millage of 5.37, and continue to have a full-service city, which is so important to our residents in Tarpon Springs. Before we go to commission comments and questions, last year, we had the meeting adjourned at 9:00 PM. Do you still want to do that this year, or you want to continue until 11:00?
I say 9:00 PM.
9:00 PM?
I'm with Commissioner Terapany, unless there's some extraordinary reason we go beyond that.
Vice Mayor, what'd you think on that?
You know, 9:00 PM, 2:00 AM, it's all the same to me, so I'm good with nine, start now.
Okay, well, if you want to, yeah, we can do that.
I think nine's a good, a good target.
Okay. Commissioner Donovan?
I'm good with nine.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to go to our commission and question comments and questions. On the slide number six, the water and sewer revenue is $21.2 million, increase of 2.3 million, which is 12.7%. Are those calculations with the 2.2% water bill reduction that we approved just a couple weeks ago?
Yes, I have the.
So that's been calculated already?
I based the revenues on the rate reduction, I'm sorry. Yes, I based it on the rate reduction.
Good, thank you. Got something that I always have to tell you, that because all the good news that we have, increasing the revenues of the, due to the property tax, no increase to the health and dental insurance premium, which we have budgeted 8%.
Correct.
For 8% increase, do you think we have room to reduce the millage?
I'm always wary of reduce in the millage, and, you know, ask us after we're done with the budget process and see if we got any left. But, you know, with the economy the way it is, I'm, you know, unless it's a small amount, but I'm not a fan of, especially the economy lately, you know, and whatever other expenditures you might be looking for in, in the budget to come through, but I prefer to keep it at the 5.37.
Always follow your opinions. I want to make sure, you know, what you really think, so.
Yeah, I would prefer to keep it at the 5.37.
Okay. Okay, we budgeted 8% increase for the health dental insurance premium. Where is this money going to be used for? Is that a special project, or is it some kind of a special fund?
Well, when we had the health insurance originally, we budgeted 8% increase. But part of that budget was using 266,000 of unassigned fund balance to balance the general fund. So basically, the health insurance decreased to 0%, let me eliminate using the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, using the emergency funds would have been good. Thank you. That's all the questions that I have, and all the comments that I have, so I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Carr. Any comments on the presentation?
I just wanted to clarify kind of what the steps are for tonight, if we could get some clarification, please.
Well, yes. First, we have the presentation, and we finish it up. Any comments or questions to Mr. Harry? Then I will invite the Budget Advisory Committee Chairman, Mr. McClure, who is in the audience today. Then we go to our general fund budget, including the salary survey and the new positions, go through the comments and all that, and if we have time, we're going to go to CIP and continue.
Okay, just for clarification, so this is, the questions are just on the presentation?
Yes.
General fund, CIP, and CRA, based on what Ron presented tonight?
On the presentation given to us by Mr. Harry.
Okay, so, Ron, just a quick question for you. So 5.5 increase for the general fund, I understood that correct, it's 1.3 million in the increase, 1.1 in the penny. What's remaining that's not allocated in those currently?
Well, basically, after, in the general fund?
Yeah.
Well, basically, you know, we had the health insurance, which took away the, using the unassigned fund balance, and then we did budget four and a half percent for the property tax, but taxable values. It's roughly about $150,000 available in the general fund.
Not much, okay.
In the penny fund, I believe you said, on the one slide we looked at?
You had 1.3, is that right?
Correct.
And then I saw, just for clarification, you called out the CIP, and I saw the sidewalks is $100,000 a year.
Correct.
Shouldn't that be $200,000 in, if it's coming from the sidewalk fund and whatever that CIP money's coming from?
Yes, I just didn't put that money, I just showed the one on the one, the capital project fund there, but yes, there is the other 100,000 from the.
Okay.
Sidewalk Improvement Fund.
And then if the, do you have any code enforcement links built into the general fund this year?
There's a code enforcement budget.
So revenue from code enforcement, I know there's some expectations in years past for code enforcement, is that something that's included?
Yes, it's part of the general fund. I think roughly it's about $100,000 budget.
Okay. All right, thanks. I have nothing else right now, just on the presentation, right?
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just want to thank everybody for all your hard work on this budget and for being here tonight for presentation and asking any, or answering any questions that we may have. This will be my last budget to review and go over as a commissioner, and if I told you I wasn't excited about it, I'd be lying to you, so. I don't envy everything that y'all have to do to come up with this budget, and you certainly do a great job year after year, so thank you for that. I'm also proud that in nine years of this process and budgeting, to have been part of the, from the bottom and then working our way back up with the revenues and making healthy budgets year after year, and doing some really good projects around town, both, you know, from a capital improvement standpoint, and also just infrastructure-wise on a lot of different good things that we've done for the town. So I really don't have, in my last budget, I don't have too many questions as is right now, but in the penny fund, Ron, just the, just the down and dirty, I see we're increasing that by 30, almost 31%?
Right, correct.
And that is mostly attributed to some of the?
And the bigger one is the 1.7 million Sponge Docks flood abatement program.
And you said that there's a possibility of some grant funds for that, or that's a reimbursement?
That's already been approved, that grant, yes.
And we, it's a reimbursement, so we spend the money initially?
Correct.
And then they reimburse us?
Correct.
So when will that be reimbursed, upon completion of the project?
Depends on the grant, sometimes, a lot of these grants are, you know, 25%, 50%, and then your final reimbursement is the way these grants work.
So who could speak to that more in staff, so when the time comes, I could ask?
I guess Mr. Bob.
Okay, that's right, I'll get with you, Bob. Just curious in terms of how we, you know, forecast for the years to come, on when we're going to get that money back, and how it can then be reinvested, basically. So I don't really have much more than that. I guess we'll get to the, some of the capital improvement stuff. I do have a question as it relates to the 850 for the future wells, but I guess we'll get to that later in the meeting.
Yeah, if that's, yeah, if that's part of the capital, yes.
Pleased to see that there's no increase in the millage. For me, year after year, that's been really important as it relates to our competitiveness. I say this every year, with surrounding communities, you know, in terms of attracting new residents and business and industry, I think that that's really important, that we keep a millage rate that's just under some of our competing communities, so I'm pleased to see that. I too, if possible, would support a small decrease, just, you know, going back to that competitiveness, if possible, I don't want to cut ourselves short. I am pleased to see that we are, again, being competitive as it relates to taking care of our employees and trying to make sure that everybody has a cost of living increase and a wage increase, and healthy years, which we're in is the time to do that, so I'm pleased by that as well. And in a nutshell, I think it looks good so far. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you, Ron, and everybody here tonight. You know, your budget reflects your values, and I'm glad we're taking care of the employees. I think we got a lot of good stuff in here, and I'm getting excited over the next month to. to add what we can and hopefully not cut too much here. My only question on the actual presentation, Ron, is just in regards to the insurance. When are we going to find out about the property insurance and the workers' comp?
That's usually, I was going to say, mid to late August is when we get the premiums on that.
Okay. Is that something we'll touch on then, on our last, I guess our last work session?
Possibly, and we might, we might have the rate by then.
Okay.
And the cost.
And if it comes in under some of that money that we had budgeted, is it just going to be treated the same as, you know, what we had budgeted originally for the health?
Yes, I mean, you know, hopefully it comes in less than the 10%, we have a little bit of savings there, you know, and we could apply that to some other expenses or put it aside and unassigned fund balance.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Commissioner Licouris?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Ron. I always enjoy this time of year. It gives me something to do, right? A lot of brain matter is expended on this, trying to work our way through it. I see in the budget book and I see in your presentation, and there's, I think part of the increase in revenues is because of the grant that was already mentioned. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I do know the second grant, and now that one is shown in the, I think in the fiscal environment, is that correct?
As far as the expenditures?
The 1.7 million dollar grant.
Exponentially, that would fall under the fiscal environment. For revenues, it falls under intergovernmental.
Okay.
As far as categorized.
Right. I, I'm trying to correlate your presentation from the, from the budget book, and that's a little bit of a different, I think here you've got it by the general fund in your presentation, at least the one slide. I don't see anything overall, and in the budget book, like on page 35, I think it includes everything. I think, for example, the numbers are different, I guess is what I'm getting at, unless...
Are you looking for the 1.7 million?
No, I was just trying to get a handle. There's some, for example, in your, in the budget book, I was trying to get an idea of why, for example, under general government, there was such a big bump between fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022. That's on page 29 on your budget book. It's about a one and a half million dollar bump, a significant jump. And then also, under the fiscal environment, it's about a $2 million jump there. Again, that's on page 29, down at the bottom where it says expenditures, expenses.
Yeah, I could try to get back to you and give you more detail on that.
Did you want to see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I've got it here.
Yeah, okay. I just think that those were extraordinary jumps, and I haven't gone through the detail.
Oh, I know what it is. It's, in the penny fund, we have the 1.3 million that, which is available, and that's, as a placeholder, it's under the general government category. So you got 1.3 million sitting there.
Is that obligated at this point, under expenditures, or?
It's in the budget under expenditures, but it's available. It's a reserve for capital, if you...
No, no, that's good, because I thought I'd read something about that you held about 1.3
Yeah, it's on the one presentation here, yeah.
And we had that list of projects that were requested but not budgeted, so that 1.3 could be used for those, is that correct?
It's unobligated.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to hear. Also, the, the, in addition, the second grant that we got from the state, I think was about 740,000 for the river dredging?
Right.
Is that correct? And we had earmarked 600,000 for that. How is that going to work now? I mean, does that money become available, or is that borrowed out of reserves as well, and now we're paying that back?
Well, we have the placeholder currently, and this current year budget for the turn basin is $600,000. And I know we're working with Bob, and I think that what we were going to do is probably on the first budget resolution, it's not in the, in the budget, that grant.
It's not here right now?
No.
But the one point, the other one, the infrastructure is, is that correct?
Yes. What we're planning on doing is a first budget resolution, which will probably be in December, we're going to bring forward, you know, that grant, plus whatever the balance expenditures is. And I know Bob said, I think he's going to have some expenditures this year. I'm not sure if it's design, engineering, of a certain amount. I can't remember if it was 100, 200,000, but...
Now, what, what type of money is that, that 600,000? I think what, interpreting what you're saying is that that money would be available as well?
It was a placeholder for the, for the turn basin project.
But, I mean, was it general fund money, was it?
No, no, I'm sorry, penny fund.
Penny money, okay. So that might be, we may be able to utilize that for these other projects that are not funded as well, is that correct?
I know, I think we, I think there was an amount that Bob was talking about, you know, with some extra, I think it was about 900,000 for the project, less the grant of the 724, 734,000 is what the total was going to be for this total project.
I guess we haven't gotten any feedback from negotiations yet or anything like that, is that?
Yeah, I think that's the bottom line. We need to see that money we're holding in case it's more than that, but if it comes in right, and we've got enough, then that money would be available, but if for some reason with negotiation, we need to put up more money than is sitting there waiting to be done. So until we know what we have to put up for that, for our portion, if there is one above the grant, then we're just holding it. When we know that obligation, then whatever money's left would be available.
Okay. The next natural question would be, we're going to be hearing about that very soon, or, I mean, is there enough information that you'll be able to tell us what our cost is going to be for that extended turning basin?
Very hopefully soon. We're working on that to get it to you as fast as possible.
Maybe the next meeting, or, I guess?
I'm thinking it's going to be the first meeting, I'm thinking first meeting of August, so...
First meeting of August.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be ready next, 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 we won't be ready next Tuesday, but...
I know, there's some other issues with the dredging, such as the restoring the site, the whole thing. I understand that. Okay, so the first, and there's some chance we might be able to get a little bit of money. We'll see, okay. I think that was it for right now. We're going to take a, this is our first budget meeting. We're going to, I did speak to the city manager at length. We're going to take a little deeper dive into the departments. As we go through, there's maybe not tonight. I think tonight's going to be, our next thing is going to be largely personnel, is that correct?
Well, it's a general fund.
General fund, and...
Okay. Well, okay, I'll just play it by ear. I'd like to get the personnel stuff, make sure we get that done tonight and not run out of time before that's done, because the general fund, we can always come back in a little more detail later on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to invite the Chairman of the Budget Advisory Committee, Mr. McCloy, to comment and to give us any recommendations that he has from the Budget Advisory Committee. You can leave it down, I don't think any...
Good evening. Claire McCloy, 1625 Kismet Court in Tarpon Springs. First of all, I want to say, I think if you all saw our sessions, very professional presentations, very knowledgeable. That was very good. When Ron first handed us the thick budget books, we were going into the emergency fund to the tune of about 266,000, roughly, ballpark. I think Commissioner Tarpani used the right word. These are healthy times for Tarpon Springs, I think financially. I know, you know, from the real estate tax revenue, pretty strong assessments are going up. Now, some of the other revenues are just because of the pandemic, they're coming up to the levels, but we'll get there. But, so, and again, that emergency fund, you used another word, these are not emergency times, so first thing that we looked at and said, how can we come up with reductions or positive news not to go into the emergency fund? Those are truly out there, and I know we have an excess of the legal amount that we have to keep, but that speaks to the strength of Tarpon Springs financially. And also, if we do have another Irma-like, or even worse, we're in a position to handle it. So we did make a few cuts, but they were not significant, but we had two positive factors. The one on the human resource benefits, no increase this year. I want to stand here and tell you that we didn't just luck out. If you remember, last year, we went out and competitively shopped that business. Five, six, I can't remember. I fully believe there's some carryover benefit to this year, you know, just the fact that we know, or our suppliers know that we will competitively bid on situations. And I always encourage, Ron, you know, take other areas and look at them as you can. You can't take them all, but if there's, insurance makes sense, maybe, maybe we should competitively shop that. But, very good times, and the tax revenue is, is, we saw it from the assessments are going up very good. We're maintaining the millage as of right now. So that's very, very positive news. The, and it's probably slightly outside of this budget, but let me just bring it up. I looked at an email late this afternoon on potential headcounts. I just encourage you to think of this as very positive times and to look at those positions very carefully. You know, the old adage, the buck stops here, the buck stops here. Don't let your legacy be the one that has built bureaucracy that to the point where you can't answer when you approve a position, where are we going to get the funds from? How are we going to pay for that? I was just, I want to look at it with an open mind, but the laundry list was kind of shocking to me. So, again, it's a little bit outside of this meeting, but I just asked the Board of Commissioners to, you know, these are healthy times. We won't be always getting a 0% increase in the benefits. We won't be always getting the, we're getting nice assessments, healthy assessments, so it is healthy times, that's a good word, but be cautious, okay? Thank you very much, and for everybody's presentations, they were, they're good, even yours, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCloy, I want to thank you for your advice. I want to thank you for your service to the city, but also like to thank all the members of the Budget Advisory Committee for the hard work and dedication and for working with the city manager, with all the directors, analyzing each line item. Well, before the Budget Advisory Committee was created, we had to go through each line item, and we spent hours and hours looking and see how many office supplies we could cut. So that was so unnecessary, and thank you for doing that. With us tonight, Commissioner Tarpani was the first Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee.
That's true.
Yeah? And thank you for that. Anyone wants to comment on advice that we got from the, from the Chairman? If not, we're going to go to the general fund budget, including salary, survey, and new positions. Licouris, back to you.
Basically, in this, the way we've done the budget presentations before, I have all of staff out here. I think I got most everybody, except for one, I think. They're all here, and this session is to ask about the general fund budget. Some of these department heads out here have some general fund, some of the enterprise funds, but they are all here, and at this time, it's to, it's to bring them forward. And again, to staff, either the two mics, whichever are closest, we made sure today they wouldn't interact, so as you get, however you decide to go through departments and go through it. Again, at any time in this process and stuff, Ms. Niffman is prepared to talk initially about the salary survey and me to talk briefly about the positions that I so far have in the budget, so we can do that. We know what time to meet, so we can bring that forward at any time in the meeting to make sure we get that in. But otherwise, on the general fund budgets of all the department heads you have out there, they are ready to come forward and explain anything that any of the five of you want to know from their budgets.
Well, Mr. Licouris, I got some questions to ask in regards to the general fund. If you look in the executive summary book, on page 29, the budget summary, what is the miscellaneous revenue, the 847,219? Where'd that come from?
I'm sorry, what page? Oh, the general fund?
Yeah.
Oh, I can tell you, the bulk of that is the hospital lease, about 370,000, and you got, you get another about 83,000 on the Savannah Cove Retirement Building there. So that's the bulk of the miscellaneous in the general fund, the hospital lease and Savannah Cove.
Savannah Cove, okay. On page 55, general fund, reserves restricted is 581,500. What is that?
It's mostly, we have
What's that?
Restricted reserves that are used, mostly as donations, cemetery perpetual care, tree bank, and I'm not sure if I said donations already, but those, those categories that make up the use of restricted reserves in the general fund.
Okay. Mr. Licouris, our economy is dependent on tourism. During the pandemic, it was very clear that our economy is vulnerable and it needs to be diverse with multiple source of revenues. Any programs to attract new businesses related to, not related to tourism, so we can create jobs, so where people can leave and work here in Tarpon Springs instead of driving to Tampa or St. Petersburg to work? Do we have any program, or is any program we can initiate to accomplish something like that?
Karen Lemus, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you. As you know, we have our CRA incentives, the facade grant, the restaurant grant, and then last year, we started the building code assistance grant. And also within the general scope of the city, we have our Ed Malorme Tax Exemption Program, where new businesses or existing businesses who are expanding can apply for city and county tax abatements for up to a 10-year period of time. We enacted that last year, so we are actively promoting that to new and existing businesses. We also have our Federal Opportunity Zone, which runs from Alt 19 to US 19, and from Klosterman to the south side of Tarpon Avenue. That provides tax incentives for investors who invest in projects in, in that area. So we're also promoting that to any new businesses, developers, brokers, who can pass that along to other investors, banks, to promote that as a good investment opportunity to come to Tarpon Springs. There's also a new employment sites program that the county started up. I think it started just this year, end of last year. That's a grant program for new and existing businesses who are building or expanding. That provides grants to them based on eligibility criteria, and we have already had a couple of businesses that we have been working with the county to see if they can take advantage of that program. So there are several opportunities that we have that we are continuing to work with businesses to let them know about the opportunities that they have here.
Do we have any promotions that will let the people know that this is what we have in place and how we do that?
Yes. Yes, we're... Yes, yes, we're, we're constantly promoting those opportunities through all of our business networks, through the real estate brokers, through banks, through developers, and through the local business community, through the county, and even statewide.
We have those programs in a couple of years, right? A year and a half or so?
Yes, some of them have been in place for quite some time and a couple of them are relatively new.
Have we got any business from these programs? Do we look at the Tarpon Springs?
Well, the, the grants, we've had several, as you know, that they're probably the most popular incentive that we have.
But that's, that's tourist-related, I'm talking about non-tourist-related jobs.
Well, yes, we're, we've got projects in the pipeline for all of these different types of incentives that every time we talk to a new business or work with one, these are the incentives that we sit down and we, we talk about those opportunities. And we have several that we're working with right now to see if they'll be able to qualify.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Licores, the, the senior center, it's almost completed. Do you budget any, any, do you budget anything for furniture for the senior center?
I think we're pretty well-equipped, we're pretty well-equipped and got money. You'll be, you'll be seeing when we have the grand opening, hopefully within a month or by September.
Okay. Last year, we contributed three thousand dollars to the neighborly care, mules on wheels. Do we still have that?
Ron, I believe you at the end of the year add that, I don't know.
Yes, we still have the, that is still budgeted, yes.
I do deliver, so I don't want to lose my job. Would you have that?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Can you remember, Ron, while we're on that, what other ones did we have that we still kept in there, do you?
Oh, yeah.
In case the commission wants to add others as we go along this budget process.
I think it's basically the same ones. We've got Pinellas Safe Harbor, five thousand, Youth Sports, twenty thousand, Sister City, twenty thousand, Neighborly Services, three thousand, Homeless Leadership, three thousand, for a total of fifty-one thousand.
Good, thank you. Mr. Licores, do you have a list of all the enhancements that we're going to do to the city buildings this year? Do you have a list of all the enhancements or repairs, maintenance that we're going to do?
Well, it's in the budget. We'd have to, we could take it out and make a list of individual if you wanted, but all the ones we're going to do are in the particular budgets.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have enough funded to make sure we maintain our buildings.
We'll make sure we get that list to you.
Thank you, sir. And my last question is for the project management. Fifty thousand dollars for engineering help, what is, what kind of help is that? Can you please explain?
Hello, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. That line item is for miscellaneous engineering services that fall under the thirty-one-hundred line item. Allows me to be responsive with and use our engineering consultants for as-needed analysis, things like, you know, the Hayes Road analysis, for example, or things like that where we don't have to go hire an engineer. It gives me the ability to be flexible and be responsive to the board's needs.
Okay, but each project doesn't have an engineering portion?
Each project does have its own engineering portion. And if, for example, if, you know, if we have a water project, water line project that needs an engineering design, that project pays for that, it doesn't come out of this particular line item.
Oh, okay. So the fifty thousand dollars in case you need it?
That, yeah, it's for miscellaneous things. It also uncovers survey services and geotech services. You know, we have a firm that will come out and do potential sinkhole analysis for us and do GPR and even includes the ability to use that line item for remediation and that type of thing. So it's a very flexible line item for my department.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have and then later we'll talk about the salary survey. Vice Mayor Carr.
I have a couple of questions from the cultural services. So I'm not sure if Diane, or do I ask Ron or Diane, who do I ask, Mark?
I'll bring her up and Ron will be there too and we'll see which one can answer best.
Diane Wood, Cultural and Civic Services.
Hey Diane, thanks for being here.
Sure.
Hey, just going through the, on page one thirty-seven and the expenditures, I'm just looking at the operating supplies as listed at ninety-five thousand and then promotionals at fifty-nine thousand. And then there's a lot of interdepartment allocations. Ron, I'm sure you could talk to the interdepartment allocations, but I'm just curious about the promotional supplies and the operating supplies. Now, does this fall under library and like promotional items for Tarpon Springs as a whole?
These are specific to, to just Tarpon Arts.
Just Tarpon Arts, okay.
Yes, sir.
So line or account thirty-four has a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of other contractual service. So is that like the plays that go on the stage here and things like that for contracted services that are then repaid with ticket revenue?
Yes, let me find it. Sixteen oh-two thirty-four, is that, yes. Actually, that's more of our maintenance contracts. If you look on one fourteen, you'll see fire alarm inspection, the security alarm. With the four venues, we have quite, quite a bit of expenses with these monitoring systems. And of course, the janitorial service too, for the four venues. They're doing a great job, so we, they're new this year. And they are a little bit higher than I've had in years past. I had a different service that wasn't working out as well, so we changed last year. And they are a little bit more expensive, but they're definitely worth it, like keep them very nice.
Okay, just so I understand correctly, then the other contractual services, a hundred and forty-four thousand, that's just upkeep on the Heritage Museum, the Cultural Museum, the Safford House? And then does it have to do with in here at all?
Diane, I know if you have page one thirty-four, it's for the a hundred and twenty thousand for performing arts contract cost.
Yeah, you're in different, which, are we operating off the little book or the big book?
I would call them two big books, to be honest with you, but smaller than two big books.
On page one thirty-four?
I'm on one thirty-seven, I think is what I'm looking at.
I think he's looking at the executive summary.
Oh, I don't have one thirty-seven, I'm sorry. I've only got one thirty-four and that's under operating supplies?
Up point thirty-four, other contractual.
Oh, that's, that's actually the ten thousand, is that what you're referring to? Under thirty-four, other contractual services?
Ron's going to come show you where. I think you're looking at a different cheap numbering system.
Hundred and twenty thousand, point thirty-four for performing arts contracts costs.
Oh, the artist fees and things like that. I have it here as audience fee as the ticketing service. But you've got it both places. Okay, a hundred and twenty, okay, contract card. Yes, those are all our artist fees. We also have meal buyouts and the hotel fees. One of the things that I've done the last couple of years is partnered with the Hampton Inn, where we keep the artists, we, we actually house them when they're here performing. And he gives me a five thousand dollar in-kind sponsorship, so that saves us quite a bit of money. We end up paying, you know, only about two thousand, you know, instead of the seven.
Sure, that's good.
But it's all the artist fees and then we make those up with the ticket sales and memberships and donations.
So like, how would that fall, would you say, like with ticket sales versus like contractual services that were, or performances, right? Do they balance out to break even or is there?
Yes, actually, you know, of course, the whole performing arts industry has been shut down because of COVID. But I do have an interesting list that'll take you through, you know, different, our different seasons. And also, you know, we, you have a fiscal year and ours is kind of a little bit different with our seasons. So it's a little bit skewed. Like right now, we're bringing in a whole lot of revenue because we just announced our new season for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So our revenue is really skyrocketing now that we've started selling tickets. So basically, it'll all balance out, but what I have for you is a chart that I could pass out at, at your leisure, like if you take a break or something, and it'll show you how our ticket sales and the operating expenses kind of balance out. We've actually done really well in the last couple of years and we're actually, you know, making money instead of losing money.
No, that's good news, okay, great. And then, Ron, there's the interdepartment allocation. There's three different lines totaling three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Can you help me understand that?
Yes, that is the library department. What we're basically doing is we get funding from the county for library services. So this is like admin charges from procurement, finance, maintenance. And we charge the library department so we can get more, increase expenditures and get more money back from the county. So that we called an interdepartment, well, we, we charge the library department, but then we credit the finance, you'll see, and if you look in finance department, you'll see a negative budget amount, you'll see one in procurement, one in IT, I think one in Tom's department for maintenance.
Is this another, is this another basically what we've talked about in years past about the water fund? How it's like we're, we're taxing or charging the, the library fund money?
Yeah, basically, but in this instance, it's so we, you know, allowable expenditures, so we can, when we, we submit those to the county, we get back more revenue from the county.
Okay, got it. That works for me. Let's increase that then.
Sorry if I get too much.
We need to increase Tom's maintenance for the library. He's doing a lot of work over there lately, so we need to bump that up. Okay, so let's see, electrical services, that's just like the power to keep the, the four buildings on, is that right? Okay, fifty-five thousand. And then I want to understand the promotional activities, it's sixty thousand dollars that we have or fifty-nine thousand dollars allocated?
Yes, that's the advertising budget for the shows. And we also have an agreement with the Beacon as well as Tampa Bay Times. They give us considerable discounts on advertising, like a one-on-one match is our, our one, our contract that we have currently. But that's all made up, actually made up again with our, our ticket sales and things like that, so.
I thought we were doing some type of like, I guess that falls under Karen's department. So that's not any like promotional for the city, it's just strictly for Tarpon Arts, right?
Actually, the promotional budget for the city is with Karen, yes, sir.
Okay, but your team does the promotional stuff for the city, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hope that's clear. I don't have any other questions for, for you right now, Ms. Woods, so thank you very much for clarifying that. I, I did have just a clarification for Karen for the promotional items. I just want some clarification on that.
Yes.
Can you just share kind of what's going on in years past and kind of where we're at today and what we've done?
Sure.
I guess you would say, so in the past, there's like, we have to have a marketing position, oh my gosh, like the world's going to end if we don't have that right. And then we came up with it and we're like, well, let's spend the money on marketing and Diane was able to use one of her positions for it and I think we're able to do a lot of great things. So kind of what's happening in this year's budget with that now?
Yeah, that goes back a couple of years and you're right about that. Back in twenty nineteen is when we really started the full-scale effort to do a, a great marketing campaign and try to bring in more visitors to the city. That's when we rebranded and we launched the Discover, Explore Tarpon Springs. We created a new logo, we did a new website, exploretarponsprings.com. We did a video, we had that photo contest where we were able to get updated photos from, we had, I think, a couple hundred, three or four hundred submissions to that. We did some digital advertising, we did the billboards on I-4 and I-75. We did a number of campaigns through the Tampa Bay Times. We did a, on a tankful marketing where we marketed the city to people within the region and then a little bit outside of the region extending to Orlando. So that's when we really started the efforts. And then in the, the next year, we took the video that was done and we created a, a commercial, a fifteen and thirty-second commercial that we ran last year. You know, under the pandemic, we had, we started a rediscover Tarpon Springs campaign. That was in the summertime when things had opened up again, not completely, but the stores and restaurants had reopened. So we launched a campaign to rediscover Tarpon Springs to try to bring people back to the city, mostly locals, try to get people out. And that was the TV ads. And then we did digital, digital ads on, online and through the newspaper and on Spectrum. So the digital ads, we did some geocaching where, you know, if you, if you go to Busch Gardens or wherever, all of a sudden Tarpon Springs will pop up on your phone. It's catching people to, to try to get them here. So we did that last year. This coming year now, we are planning a couple of campaigns. One is an I Love Local and we were going to do that last year and we're, we're holding that off for this year now that everything is open. We're going to be going around to all the businesses with a, a big I Love Local sign, taking pictures with the business person in front of their store and then doing a big social media outreach on that on Facebook. Then they can have that for their own Facebook outreach. We also have more of the video that we can do commercials for. We've got campaigns that we were targeting this year for families and more for locals. So that's what we're going to do and that's in also, along with our brochure, our City of Tarpon Springs brochure that was redesigned last year. It's, it's very new and bright. We put that in about twelve hundred sites throughout the state. And we did a hundred thousand printing of, of those last year. Those will carry us forward, they last usually about a year, so we'll be reprinting those. We haven't been doing a lot of newspaper advertising because of COVID. We've been doing more digital, which I think has helped us more than the, festivals are back, so we're, you know, targeting on those as well. We've got our billboards also at the St. Pete Clearwater Airport, we renewed those. We renewed the I-4 and I-75 billboards through next June. So we're, we're continuing to do the robust things that we can to make sure that we keep Tarpon Springs in the, in the limelight.
Okay, so just real quick, what does that, where's that fall dollar-wise of all that? So we have a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand printed promotional brochures, right? That just market our city for like, welcome to Florida tourist section and also like all the hotels, is that right?
Yeah, the, we've been spending on an average of, since twenty nineteen, if you recall that you, the BOC provided additional, I think, thirty thousand that year that we've been carrying forward. We've been spending about sixty to sixty-five thousand a year on advertising. We've been getting a greater reach on that though, because we partner with the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association on a lot of the campaigns and advertisements that we do. So that helps our, our budget go farther.
Okay, so how, how do you determine that like a billboard on I-75 or I-4 is actually working or there's a return or ROI on that and it can't be spent on something else? How do you, are you figuring that out? Just high level, it could be really quick. And then secondly, what does that actually cost to do something like that?
Yeah, the, the billboards actually was, the business community wanted. They've been asking for that for years and so we went and did those ones digital, ones not. It's really a look at, there's really no way to quantify it and that's often with a lot of things, except for the digital. By word of mouth, by people saying they see it. We ask our businesses to ask people how they found out where, where Tarpon Springs is and why they're coming here. But again, that came from our business community. The billboards run us, we split those with the Merchants Association and they run us about twenty thousand a year. That's for two billboards.
And what about the St. Pete Clearwater? I think the St. Pete Clearwater is like a gold, gold mine to have it there in that airport. What's that run?
Yeah, we have two of them there in the baggage claim area. Those run, again, that's split, that one's split with the merchants and the chamber. That costs us about three thousand.
That's it? Okay. So it's about sixty-five thousand dollars a year that the city's spending on promotional items across the board, right? Promoting business, promoting Tarpon Springs, promoting people to come to Tarpon to spend money at the restaurants and the industry to, as a whole, right?
That's all tourism-related citywide, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's a great, I mean, I think it's a great amount of money to be spent on promoting our businesses. It really shows a lot that the city cares about promoting a, a good image. So I think it, it goes a long way for that. So I appreciate you sharing some more insight on that one. Mayor, I mean, I have some questions on the, the positions, but right now that's gonna be it for now.
Come back to that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ron, on page seventy-six of the executive summary. There's a, a non-departmental increase of fourteen and a half percent. Could you elaborate on that?
What item was that?
It's page seventy-six of the executive summary.
Oh, seventy-six.
The last item.
Yeah, the last, last line item.
That's basically where the excess, when I mentioned, remember I mentioned we had a hundred and fifty thousand money left over? That's where it's residing, right there.
So it's not committed then?
Correct.
So the fourteen and a half percent non, is just classified right now as non-departmental? And that's roughly a hundred and fifty thousand?
Correct.
And that's just non-committed?
I just put it in there as a placeholder and a certain, and a line item point forty-nine.
Okay. And then on the procurement services, the internal audit, and then also the building development, each of those had a significant decrease? And I'm just curious how that works out, whether it was some form of a reorganization to a degree for each department or reclassification or why, why are those departments decreasing?
Procurement, Mr. Jack is retired.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the internal audit, is that just because we hired somebody and then the?
Correct, we used to, we had a budget for the internal auditing firm. We used to, we're done with them. This was our last year of their five years.
But it would seem that would go up, right? Wasn't that like forty thousand and now we've hired Mr. Pull?
Well, we budgeted, we did budget for the new internal auditor, the position. So the, that additional was with the firm there.
So it's basically the difference? In between what we budgeted for, for the position, less the forty thousand?
Right.
Gotcha. And then building development, that seems, that seems a little odd. I feel like we've hired people there, right? Why is that going down? That's on the same page, page seventy-six, building development, decrease of eight percent.
I would have to look into that, I'm not sure I'll top my head here.
Wow.
Dumped him.
Well, give me a minute. Do I have a certain time limit here?
One for the home team over here.
Remember last year, like fifteen more minutes in a meeting, he jumps up and says, oh, I know, I remember.
Right, yeah, I do remember that.
This is the first one, eh?
You say building maintenance or?
Building development.
Oh, I think they had some capital last year. I'm getting there, don't worry.
You can come back to it, Ron, if you want.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I, I'm, it's part the Tree Bank. We budgeted more for Tree Bank projects last year and his department, building development combines with Tree Bank. And we had more projects with, with the Tree Bank last year. I think they had some major, I can't remember exactly the major, but it was a tune of about a hundred and sixty thousand. So that was budgeted in the previous year and we don't have that this year.
Gotcha. So going back to the hundred and fifty thousand for the non-departmental. So basically, we have a hundred and fifty thousand and you're just leaving it as a line item?
Just a placeholder within the budget.
Hires or what?
I'm sorry, what?
For future hires?
It, it's just a reason, usually sometimes when I have these, I just title them for emergency items and, and just place them in the budget.
Or if the commission has something that needs to be funded and we use it for.
So could we get maybe a, like a reconciliation of some of these items that we discussed tonight? That we can have like a cut sheet for the following meetings, like for example, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And if it's in the general fund, then obviously it can only be spent in such a way, correct?
Correct, it's available for expenditure like the money in the penny fund and like there's some place to wait to see.
Spend it any way we want, basically.
Pardon me?
Spend it any way we want.
Yes.
Right.
I hate to say tell somebody to spend money, yes.
Look, we're all friends here, okay? So, okay, so I think that's important for this commission to, to recognize. And then on page seventy-seven, you have a line item, forty-nine other current charges, and that's an increase of three-quarters of a million dollars. I was hoping you could shed a little light on that. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Seven, seven hundred and seventy-six percent, not three-quarters of the money.
Well, part of that, that's where we have that hundred and fifty thousand that's set aside there.
Okay. But then there's still from twenty twenty-one, there would still be an additional hundred plus?
Yes, along with that, I have an emergency reserve for, for maintenance, especially when.
Tom breaks things?
Not Tom breaks down, but his AC systems and they need air conditioning, they're sweating in their office. And he says, I need money for an AC system, forty thousand dollars. I, I go, no, let him sweat, no.
So, so those other current charges, if I'm understanding this right, the dollar change, let's just go off of that, right, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two is three twenty-eight. So if you take a hundred grand off of three twenty-eight.
Well, the hundred grand plus the hundred.
A hundred and fifty, sorry, you take the hundred.
A hundred and fifty plus a hundred grand for the emergency items for the AC and stuff, if, if we had any AC repairs.
So that's two fifty. And then you've got another eighty.
Let's see what else is there. We, we just have some other advertising in there for, for budget purposes and stuff, but.
Could you, at our next meeting for this other current charges, break that out for us?
Sure.
Okay. I think that would be helpful. I see we're not buying any machinery this year, which, you know, I like to, I like to have a healthy fleet of things like that, but that's fine. And then in the sixty-three percent increase for books, publications and memberships, could you shed a little light on that? It's about a forty thousand dollar change from last year to this year.
Yes, that's the e-plan software we're buying out of the building development department.
Oh, great. So that's, that's building development related, that's gonna help streamline things, what we've been talking about. Okay, good. That's money well spent. And then grants and aids are down thirty-two percent, which isn't a lot of money, but, you know, the, as you can tell, the big percentages is what is causing these questions. What, what's that about?
Well, in the previous year, we had a budget for twenty-five thousand for additional grants. We don't have it in, in this budget, proposed budget. It was taken out unless you want it put back, but it was titled additional grants.
And that's just to help?
I think mostly it's, that's put grants down at the sponge docks.
So the, the grant aids basically is for, to help write the grants, to supplement some of the grants?
No, it's for actual grants, a lot of the Karen's facade grants and stuff and.
Understood, understood. Yeah, I mean, for me, I think that that's something as we go through the budget. I think that the, our, our internal grant programs, not like the ones that we apply for, but the ones that we facilitate, I think that those have done outstanding throughout the community. So for the commission to consider, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. I think that that's something that we should consider putting back into the budget. You know, it's again, it's facade grant stuff, different grants that Karen and, and the staff have come up with. And I think that that's something for twenty-five thousand dollars to put back in the budget is definitely money well spent. That's all I have, thank you.
Can I ask a question then? Was there, okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Was there a rollover for that that wasn't used for this year into this current year's budget? Or is it just put back into the fund and it's not funded this year for what he was talking about?
Are you talking about the twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, for the sponge docks ones.
I'm not sure how much we spent so far, but it could be rolled over if there's some left into the, into this twenty, two thousand twenty-two budget of whatever's left.
I, I think just to add on what, what Commissioner Terry Panio was saying, it might be good to see what was left over and.
Karen, do you have that, do you know how much we've got left that we had planned to roll? We didn't plan the budget anymore until they use what's in the budget, so.
Yeah, the twenty-five thousand, that was for the Greek Town Grant because it's not in the CRA. So it was a facade grants for them. There's about ten thousand left in that fund.
Okay.
So that's, there's ten thousand left in the fund with taken, and then this twenty-five thousand is just not refunding it? Is that right? Basically, Ron?
We, we're not, yeah, we haven't rebudgeted it for the next year.
And what did we start out with last year, Karen, twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Okay. And just while you're up at the podium, just to get a little bit more feedback on that. So of the twenty-five, fifteen was used and it was a matching grant like the other ones?
Right, that was a total of, it was a five thousand dollar matching grant.
Okay.
Capted five.
So three people used it.
So we've had, well, we've had four. One was just a small awning, so it didn't take the, the total five. We've had four people use it.
Okay. So, but still, again, you know, it seems like in the grant inception year, it's always a little bit slow to catch on. And last year, I think, was the first year for that particular grant, right?
Right.
Yeah. So for me, I still would like to put the money back in, you know, so it's a healthy fund and we can encourage people to use it. And Karen can, you know, beat the pavement and give the money away. So just for the commission's consideration.
It's a good program.
I think so, yeah, absolutely.
And I agree. I didn't, I didn't know we were that low and was gonna run out of it, so I agree.
We just have to encourage him to use it.
Yeah, and I think with COVID being over, you know, everything was slow last year. But, you know, I've had several inquiries and I, I'm, I know, I'm pretty positive we'd be able to use it down at the sponge docks.
Absolutely.
Good, good.
Yeah, again, it was always the intention that if they use the money, which hadn't been the case before, that if they used and run out, that we would go back in and try to find additional funds to replenish it. So, so that, that is important. That is what, what we told the, the sponge docks. So we need to be ready. Hopefully they start using it, that we'll have the money to replace it with.
Sure.
Great.
Money well spent.
No doubt.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
It's it?
Okay.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's a good idea. I absolutely support that as well. I don't have any questions for any specific staff members, more so just two suggestions. Well, I guess I do have a clarifying question for Ron. Ron, how much money were we giving to the homeless leadership board in this budget? Three?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How much money were we giving to the HLB in this budget, three grand?
H O B?
Homeless Leadership Network.
Homeless Leadership Board.
Same about three thousand dollars.
And we gave it to them last year, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just something for staff and the board to chew on. I think, and, and again, I have a tremendous amount of respect for the HLB. I've served on the board for over two years now. That might be money that I think could be better spent if we just donated the same exact amount to the Shepherd Center because they do, you know, virtually provide the same services, but just more so in our backyard at the local level. So that's just something to consider is just moving that three thousand from the homeless leadership board with the county to our local Shepherd Center. And then also, I think it's page one-ten, you don't have to get up, but Chief Young for the police expenditures. Looks like our budgeted is between like four and five thousand dollars for the Cops and Kids donations. Again, just something for the board to chew on. I did talk with Josh at Cops and Kids and he mentioned the idea of a changeable marquee letter sign that could go on the building. They're really cheap, just something like five thousand dollars. And that way it would be a sign for, that the community could see for events that were coming up that Cops and Kids were hosting or being a part of, different ways to register your kids or just community info in the area. That's another thing, that's just five thousand dollars that I think if we increased it, whether it was through Cops and Kids donations or, I don't, I don't know how we want to handle it, but I just think that'd be five thousand dollars well spent. But those are my only two comments for now.
Okay.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're, Mr. McCloy said we're kind of in extraordinary times. Last year, we were singing the songs of woe and how we were gonna get killed with COVID and it was gonna take us back to two thousand and eight. And now we've got all this windfall of revenues coming and, and I very, I, I think what you're saying is be careful of recurring expenses. And I, I completely understand, agree with that. That's always poison, that you can't go back after you've made that commitment. I agree with Commissioner Donovan on the three thousand dollars for the Shepherd Center. I know they're doing a lot of planning as well through the Homeless Issues Group, if that's the correct name of the group, the committee that you've got, Chief Young and, and I, and I know there's a lot of activity going there and we've seen a marked improvement of the homeless situation. I think we just need to kind of encourage to, to, to continue that, so I think that's a good idea. I've got just a couple of questions, but I, there are some bumps in here. Rather than trying to get into the nitty-gritty and, and have Ron thumbing through these, I'll get with the individual, I'll get with Ron and then if I need to, I'll go to the individual departments. We're gonna take another look at this. Just a couple of comments. We, we, you explained the internal auditor anomaly. The, the three positions that the city manager's asking for is not in the budget at this time, right? Is that correct? Okay. And right now, our personnel expenses, general fund, citywide, we're still funding at one hundred percent.
I'm sorry, what?
We're still funding our positions at one hundred percent. In other words, we're not taking into account any overlaps in positions from somebody leaving, for example, and the amount of time it takes to rehire somebody.
No, they're, they're, they're all, you know, filled at a hundred percent.
Okay, we, in our water and sewer rate study, our estimate was ninety-five percent for that.
Correct.
And I brought this up last year and our personnel expenses are three-fourths of our budget.
In the general fund, yeah.
And I, I think we really need to think real hard. Twenty-five years ago, we didn't, we didn't budget it at one hundred percent. We budgeted it some percentage less, but we kind of monitored that situation, how it goes. And I'd like to take some consideration of cutting back in the percentage, just like we did with the Water and Sewer Fund. That ninety-five percent is what we budget to because we know there's gonna be people gone. And speaking to a couple of the department heads, I know we're having some issues in hiring people right now and, you know, I have a feeling there's gonna be some vac, vacancies. So that money's just gonna be sitting there and we're gonna have some other things, if you will, that need to be done, that we're gonna have a hard time arguing or not arguing, but deciding where that money's gonna come from. And I think that's something that's obvious in front of us that we need to, to do. Maybe just kind of look at where we are right now as far as what was budgeted, what we've spent so far, and then consider that going into the future.
Like I say, you know, compared to years past, five, ten years ago, you used, I could rely on five, ten vacant positions. We don't have that many now, so we're seeing it mostly fully staffed. I, I think maybe Kevin's looking for somebody in the building development, but a lot of departments are fully staffed now.
I, I was, I'm not sure, I think I was talking to Mr. Funchen and, and he was having a little bit of a, some questions in that regard.
Oh, you need some positions.
And, and maybe that'll turn around, but every, everybody I've heard has had a hard time getting help because of the increase in the unemployment insurance and also the stimulus payments that have been made.
No, you're, you're correct, though. We just, we've had two recent city managers' meetings to deal with the issues, a lot of the issues that we have going, the federal money and that. And one of the things we talked about, and we even talked about it at the state conferences, the prediction is we're gonna have a lot of trouble in the upcoming year possibly, especially with the higher positions. But even now, I mean, you see it around, you see restaurants begging for staff to come in and work. You see people telling you twenty minutes and the restaurant looks half-empty and you say, huh? And they say, we don't have the staff. So the prediction is we could have some difficulties in this coming year. We have been good, we've, we've been good, but there is an anticipation, there could be some problems in hiring at both the higher and lower end, there could be those problems. So you are right in that area where, where we may be seeing that phenomenon coming, coming forward as we go and as we see in the private enterprise, the problems they're having is liable to hit us. I know just people to cut grass, you can't get, you can't get people to go and cut grass, it's a lot harder. So this may spread to other positions and, you know, that may be a phenomenon that we see. So, this may spread to other positions, and, you know, that may be a phenomenon that we see during the next year. You know, so you're correct, that could occur.
Thank you, thank you for that. And I also recognize we're gonna talk a little bit about the salary survey later, and there's some yellows and things like that. We need, and maybe that, that money could offset to help with that as well. So, it's just something that we need to be mindful of and
Yes.
understand that even when we get into this other stuff tonight, there may be some yellows and reds, but that doesn't mean that we would have to have extra money for that if, if we have this problem in hiring. The other question I had was on the grants. It's, I know that was discussed a little bit, but I had a question on grants that, for example, the sea level rise grants that we, we had, like Arcadis. We would hire a consultant to help us write a grant for obtaining a larger project funds and that sort of thing. Does, does that money come out of the general fund? Or does that, for example, in this particular case, it would be sea level rise and it would be a roads and streets project?
Are you talking about a grant writer?
A grant writer, well, actually, it would be hiring a consultant to write the grant.
I would think it would depend on, you know, if it's, if it's general fund related, or if it's water and sewer, we would charge it to the water and sewer fund.
These are the questions I have. We'll talk about that later. That's some, I don't know that it's in the budget. I know we've talked about doing it, and that's something, I, I just don't want to lose the,
Right.
you know, lose that particular item if it's not in there. That's it. I, I will be getting back with the department heads, but I'm, like I said, three-fourths of our budget's personnel. I'm very interested in talking about personnel tonight, so, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, we finished with the general fund, and now it's salary survey, and then we go to new positions. But before we go to the salary survey, Mr. Licorice, you budgeted for a 3% employee wage increase. Can you tell us, what do you have planned? You're going to give 3% increase to all of them? Or you're gonna have the same plan as you have the previous years?
Right now, and remember, let me, let me make it a little clearer. Usually, a lot of this information about the raises, about positions, about salaries, usually that comes at the end, at the end of the budget work sessions. We've asked to move it up to the beginning this year, which is good because of what's going on. So usually, what I do is, is watch the budget. We, we make sure we put a set amount down that we've got budgeted and we know 3%, and we did that. We look at all the different things we're gonna talk about tonight. Are there positions that need to go up? Are there other things? And that's another fund of money that we try to find. What you're seeing is 3% is the base. What we're gonna make sure we have available to give to people, but there could be some changes, like the last four or five, we've raised the lower salaries up and those sort of things. That's usually towards the time when I give you the presentation at the last regular session of August, where you see all the reorgs, the, the reclassifications, the raises, and all that. We've been into the budget a long way, and sort of what Mr. McCloy, we know kind of where we are, and we see if we can add those things to it and stuff. So when you see the three, that's the base to start with. Hopefully, in the process, we'll have more money as we look at, you know, if we need to raise positions, reorgs, or what we're gonna do. Even with positions, then we would be looking at that through the rest of the budget process until that last meeting, regular meeting in August, where we present all those to you.
Don't give me, I, I do support the 3% increase for the employees. I just wanna make sure that the low wages don't stay still. I, I want to make sure that these people are able to make a living.
Yes.
That's what I'm concerned with.
Yes.
Thank you. In regards to the, the survey, I requested the survey, Mr. Licorice, a few years, a few months back, to look at the, the salaries and compare our salaries to the other cities. And the reason for that is because, if you remember, we are, in many times, we are trained, we bring in, you know, we hire the employees, we train them, and then a year later, they go to work for other cities or counties. So we want to make sure that we retain the expertise, we retain the people, the good people that we have. So it's very, very important that we take a look at that. I know that there are some, some positions, they're not, they're not comparable with the other cities yet, but they should be. But it needs to be some kind of a gradual increase. And if you please give us that, bring us that information back in another meeting. That way, we have an idea exactly how you're going to do it, to bring, to bring all those employees where they should be comparable to the other cities.
Again, what you're gonna get tonight is, is the salary survey you asked for. That, we were trying to get to a regular meeting, we just have not had the space and time so we could cover it well. What you're gonna see, and, and we've done many of these. This one's again, is, I don't know how long, Jane Niffen, Judy Staley have been working on these surveys along the way. Some presented to the commission, and some for us to look. If you go back over the last five budgets, and you see, again, that document I bring you at the last regular session of August with the regrades, reorgs and stuff, that's us going in there and trying to correct some of the inequities. Just because you see some inequity in the ranges, doesn't necessarily mean that the people in the positions right now are a problem. Because department heads will hire people within those ranges to compensate for losing to other departments and stuff. So, it's not as simple as doing a survey. And every year, you know, we take surveys or similar things like that and look at positions. So, what we're giving you tonight is the outline that we go about to look at. Again, you would think cities have comparable, you could look at one city and the other ones that compare. There's, there's a lot of them that the positions aren't the same and do the same thing. Even, you know, when we're dealing with the charter officials. You can't find a comparison with a city clerk and collections, because none of them have that. So you really don't have a good comparison there. You'll see some other ones that don't have a good comparison in there. You'll see some that might be 5% or 6% behind, but we've hired people in that division up within the range because we know kind of what the market is, we know what the other cities are paying, we know what their personnel is, and, and we compensate from it here. When Jane gives this salaries survey and talks about some of the things we see, one of the evident things is that, that we definitely need to do some moving of grades. And that doesn't have to be with salary with them. But our top ends, especially with our top people, I know a lot of people expected the survey not to think our top people were underpaid. Unfortunately, knowing the other cities and what their people make, I knew that was gonna be the case. But again, it may be a simple thing, is moving the ranges and letting the people achieve what the other cities achieve. So, there's a lot that go, goes into this. So I think, first, I think Jane can give you the, the results of the survey and talk about what we've seen. There's some analysis in there, some things we see. And then we go back and, and, and this time, we're getting your input early, to when we go back and look at the drawing board and see where each of these departments may be hurting, where they need some help, where they need to be so their people aren't stolen. Some of them, because of where they've hired, they're not in danger this year, or maybe next year, but they may be in a couple of years. So, we, we look at all of that extensively before we give it to you in that final document. So Jane, why don't you start with, with the results of this survey and some of the things that we found? And that can get us started on the discussion.
Honorable Mayor and Board of Commissioners, Jane Niffen, HR Director. I'm going to be very brief with my comments, because I believe the salary survey speaks for itself. Before I start, I do want to tell you that I had briefly put together or updated the spreadsheet in preparation for salary discussions this year. And as I went through it, I put everybody where they should be, current salaries. And apart from the golf course, I found that the city has only 36 positions that are less than $15 an hour. And of those 36 positions, 23 of them are part-time or part-time temporary. And so we have made great strides in that, in that particular area. The first thing we looked at, sorry, the first thing we looked at when we started this survey was, who are our competitors? Who are we losing people to? So we, as you can see in the survey, we, we found there were four cities and two counties. And I can tell you, even this week, we're losing someone else to another county. An employee that we probably would rather keep. But what I want to do is go through and talk about the color coding, and I'm pretty sure it's pretty simple. I know people are, tend to be very visual. So, the, in the salary survey that you see, the orange, or I call salmon colors, represent the areas or the positions in which the city of Tarpon Springs is higher than the average of the, the other competitors. Okay, you'll see that in both the maxes and the min's. Then, when we move along to, to the areas where the city is behind or below the, our competitors, it's broken into two categories. The first category is people who are jobs positions that are less than 10% either, below the, the average. And that color code is green. You can see that in your, in your survey. Then we move on to those that are more than 10%, 10% or more, I should say. Lower than our, the average of our competitors, both maxes and min's. Those are the yellow ones. And lastly, we did find some that had, had poor comparisons. It's some, some, some difficulties in finding a feasible and acceptable comparison. So those few positions you'll see are listed in blue. Basically, it, it goes on to say that overall, we have, we evaluated or considered 164 positions. Of, of that, above average, we had 22 positions at min, 56 positions at max. In the 1% to 9%, or 1% to 9.99% below, we had 81 positions min and 63 positions max. More than 10% below average, which was the yellow, 56 positions min and 40 positions at max. And then we had a total of five positions that really didn't have good comparators. What we did discover was that nearly 66% of the, of the position minimums and over 70% of the, of the position maximums fall within 10% of, of the average. Of the 56 minimums over 10% below the survey average, 34% are in grades 22 through 28. Of, of the 40 maximums over 10% below the survey average, 40% are, again, are in grades 22 through 28. There are 25 positions in tho, in those particular grades, which is 15% of the total surveyed. We do find that, moving down the ladder a little bit, we find that an additional 17.8% of the minimums and 22.5% of the maximum of positions that are more than 10% are, fall into pay grades 17 through 21. And there were 30 positions surveyed in these particular pay grades. And these pay grades particularly represent middle management and the higher-level technical positions. Based, as I mentioned, based on what we've done in the past, the last few years, raising the bottom of the, of the salary ranges, I believe we eliminated, we moved people, so we no longer have bottom, bottom grades. The minimum grade now we have is, is a grade six, where we used to have fives and fours. A lot of those positions have, as I say, becoming more competitive. As you know, effective September 30th, the minimum wage in Florida will be raised to $11 per hour. So, based on the, on the surveys, we, we found that positions in grade 16 and below, which a lot, a majority, well, I shouldn't say a majority, a lot of our employees fall. Only 20, 27 of, of 109 positions were more than 10% below the, the survey average. And as the city manager mentioned, a lot of recent hires, in order to be competitive, we cannot, we cannot pay the minimum wage for that grade. We have employees or prospective candidates that absolutely would not accept that, and have been very vocal about it. So we have been hiring often at midpoint, and sometimes we've even been hiring at max because of the competition in, in the local area. We are, you know, we have to compete relatively successfully with our competitors in, in order to stay viable. So the range, I, I don't think I want to go into range penetration, really. There are very few employees that are, that are less than 10% into the, into their range. Those employees represent people who are obviously new hires, that have a lot less experience and perhaps fewer qualifications than people that get hired into, hire into the range. An additional 13 employees were under 15%. But for employees in pay grades 22 through 28, 19 are more than 75% into the range. Four are over 90%, and five are at 100% of their maximum. Over all of the grades, we have 43 employees that are within 75% of the maximum pay for their range. We did not include charter officials, because we had actual, well, we did, but we had to use actual salaries because a lot of them don't have ranges. So, that basically is what happened in the salary. We've arranged it in two ways. The first that you see is by function or job type. And the second file that you have is actually by, by grade. So, without further ado, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Ms. Niffen, great job on the, on the survey. There's a lot of good information there. I just want to make sure that we have a plan that over time, we bring those positions where it should be comparable to the other cities and retain our expertise, our good employees that we have. That's my objective.
Okay.
If you please do that, and then Mark Licorice, the city manager, can actually bring, puts money next to it. And then gradually, we get up to the point that we are totally comparable. That's what I like to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions to Ms. Niffen? Anybody? Yes?
I do. I thank you for the salary survey. That's something that we've been waiting for, for a while, and this is a good time for it. Also, from a hiring perspective, it's a good time for it too, to bring these things out. In my discussions with the city manager and others, and I think yourself, Ms. Niffen, we've always talked about how we may not pay the most, but what we've been able to do is our benefits have offset that. And I think, I think in conversation with city manager, maybe that doesn't necessarily work anymore. In other words, there's this expectation of the benefits, plus we want to get paid what others pay us as well. Is that a good observation, or is that, there's some caveats to that?
I, I think some of it may be generational. If you are young and starting out, your focus in, for a lot, for, a lot of the time is on salary. When you're young and healthy, you don't really think too much about benefits. We find that when we try to sign people up for benefits. A lot of times, they don't come with their packages, they forget to do, you know, fill in the portions that they need to. But when they need it, they're right there. So, you find that the older people get, the more focused they are on other things besides salary. Although, it's nice to have a good mix, and we do have a very good benefit plan. That is our main attraction. At, at this point, I can honestly say it probably is not the salary, although we have been hiring further into the range so that we are competitive. But the benefit package is probably one of the best in the area.
Yeah, I suspect if we didn't even have a, as good a benefits, we'd still have problems hiring people, as you're describing it. I, I know I've had conversations with Mr. Funchen, and the people that apply may not be the safest people to themselves for the positions. And we would look for something. I think that gets back to not being able to hire at the minimum. So that, that's good to know. The other thing was the, it was the, let me see, where I've got my notes here. The attrition rate. Last year, I had asked, I think it was about this time, for an attrition rate. Could we get an update on that as well, to see how we, hopefully, we haven't changed much, but it's always good to kind of keep tabs on that, especially with what I brought up earlier, and the city manager had brought up earlier as well.
Yes, we, we can, we can try to present you with one. During a COVID year, it might be, it might not be as accurate as it would normally be because of the circumstances imposed by the, the fact that people were, were at home, people were working on and off. So we'll, we'll try our best to get you the most accurate data we can.
Also, the part-time community that we have here. Also, the part-time community that we have here at the city. I know the city manager and I talked about that a little bit as well. Is there going to be any more kind of leaning on that a little more to make, maybe perhaps fill in some of these vacancies that we may not be able to fill? Maybe people don't want to work full-time, but they'd be okay with part-time?
We do have, we do have a number of part-time people. Some positions are, lend themselves better to full-time and part-time than others. Generally speaking, in the past, we've always thought of part-time people, as you say, people who really don't want to work part-time, or that we need temporary staff, a short-term solution until we can staff with full-time people. But, again, there are people who only want part-time. But there's a difference, when you hire, I've found over the years, when you hire a full-time position, you get a different, a different set of applicants than you do for a part-time. It's, you know, that's just a general rule. Not always, but you get a different candidate pool.
We may not necessarily be able to rely on that to fill any voids for full-time, such as on roads and streets or parks and parkways.
We could do that on a temporary basis. I'm not sure, I'd have to talk to Tom about how effective part-time people would be.
Well, I think what we found is, and what we found in trying to solution is try to go to the agencies to get temporary employees, and it's worked out terrible. It's just, it's just terrible. And again, I think that's the biggest point, the part-time applicants compared to the degree of what you'd want to employ is just a lot less. Now, there's a few that are very good and want that part, but really, it is not in the areas that we're trying to hire the jobs for, where it may come in, in some, it's not those jobs we are needing that we can settle for, because those applicants are poor and you can't even go to temporary. So you used to be able to rely on temporary service, get painters, get people working, you could, you have excess of jobs or a couple people go out on injuries in the city, you could go grab a temporary service, get a good worker and come it up. That's not the case anymore. I'm sure Tom can tell you the horror stories. And what we end up with is not getting the work done because we can't even utilize what we've done in the past on temporary help, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. I just, it's a complicated situation, I think, that we're moving into. I, I'm going to have more say about this when we talk about. I guess what we're going to do is talk about the individual positions that are being requested next by each department or in a group?
Two cents. What I was going to present is, is the three I already know to present to you that I need, and I think that Ron is able to find the money to fund right now. The second group is all the positions, and remember, when you see this list, the shock value of it, I asked to look over the next three years, and you're anticipating of positions, what positions, so when you look at it and say, wow, all these people for this year, when the departments gave them to me, I said, there's, because I'm very conservative with positions, if you look at the last budget, I don't ask for new positions very often. I don't know, without the look, I thought of that tonight, how many new positions I've asked for in the last five years because of the recurring costs and everything. There are three, and it's mainly for, through the course of what the city is going through, why we need these three positions essentially, and why I want to emphasize this commission, I really want the approval to, Ron to find funding for. Then, it's up to these other positions, and the two main areas of these other positions, I know some of them are, the commission has generated the need of, we're short in areas, for instance, like, like Public Works, or the importance of new areas that's come up, like security, NIT. This is a wish list for this board to discuss, and what, what do you want to concentrate on, and what you want us to look for funding on. And again, it's after these three positions. Obviously, we have another dynamic with another position that's, that's come forward, that's wanted in there, that, again, I've written the job description for, but I haven't submitted to you. So, the first thing I want to do is talk about the three positions that I really need and want to go around to do the funding on, and then a discussion over these positions with the needs for the next, you know, one to three years, and where the board's thoughts are on these positions, or what avenues you have to help us get to the point. I'm pretty sure, and I've talked to Ron, we can come back to you in a future meeting and fund these three positions that I'm saying we absolutely need. So that's how I thought of presenting it. Obviously, we'll present it any way the board wants us to present it.
Mr. LeCours, I did want to interrupt you, but I want to make sure that we finished with the salary survey, was anything that before we jump into the positions?
I'm done.
Okay? I just want to make sure everybody's clear with that, surveying, everybody's satisfied. If has any other advice wants to give to us?
I just have a quick question for it. So, Mr. LeCours, how do you, how do you use the salary survey for the employees and the pay wages and the charts or the grades? Is that something you're going to do internally and then bring to the board throughout the year?
Yes, we do that, we do that internally and go through every position, the board, the, these departments has already given me some of the positions they think need to be raised, need, we will, we will sit, we will sit down and go with each department's their thoughts, in reality, what's happening now with what the results of the survey with. I'll put a funding aspect and a priority behind it, and then I bring those back to yours. If you look at last year, you'll see, sometimes there are a lot of items, sometimes there are more, 13 items, re-grades, reorgs, raising grades of position. All of those are methods I get to answer what the problems I see in the survey are, and, and that's what you get every year in the past budgets. And that's the document I'll be preparing for you. The only difference this time is you're going to give me a little more input, you know, you're going to give me a little more input before I go back to that, by, we're talking about this early in the salary survey and the thoughts of it, so.
Do you plan to have any next workshop?
I could have some more information to you, but it comes back to you finally, again, in the last meeting of August. The last meeting of August is where the final comes back. I can, you know, we can bring you, I don't know, you know, we're talking about, you know, only nine days before the next one, so I don't know, you know, I don't think we'll be through all the departments and our figuring and our budget dealings then. It'll be more after we see what you, what this commission wants to put into the budget from the next meeting, the next budget being the 29th, to what I have to work with to put together this document. Because again, anything I do or look at has to be the availability of funding for, so I get that input. That's why it's usually done at the end, after we've had a couple budget workshops with the board, to know what the board wants, and what the board wants incorporated in the budget, and then how I take what's available left, or I come to you and say, we really need this with salaries and stuff, over what you put in the budget. So, that's the whole process we usually go through in our budget with the positions.
Good.
I've got one further question. So there's $150,000 in the general funds, and we talked about some grants and some other things as well. So, I understand there's enterprise funds and other funds that could fund some of these positions that we're talking about tonight.
Yes.
But that would have, I mean, these positions obviously could take that 150 pretty quickly, right? For the general funds?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's clear. All right, thank you.
Any, any other questions, comments on the survey? No one? Okay. Mr. LeCours already started talking about the, the positions. Well, we have many positions that have been requested by, of course, the city manager, also the directors. To make it easier for all of us, I created the spreadsheet and make sure that I send it to you. We need to prioritize all those positions. I'm sure we cannot fill every position that has been requested. I know that Mr. LeCours has asked for, Mr. LeCours, three positions, isn't it? The planning and zoning principal, planner?
Yes. You want me to give the presentation of those three positions first, or?
That's a construction field inspector? And public services assistant, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Two of them new positions, and one that Paul Smith has wanted me to fill for the last five or six years, whenever Bob Robertson went to projects administration. It's really his, a version of his former position, so two new and one that's been not filled in a period of time.
Yeah. And of course, we have many other positions that have been requested. What I think is good to do is, we need to, well, discuss it, but also ask our planning and zoning, excuse me, ask our budget advisory committee to give us advice on some of those positions that if we need, that we need to fill.
Can I present the three first?
Oh?
Because I'd like to present the three positions that, I don't think we need anybody, or we have, there's three positions because of what we're, the positive nature we're moving in the future that we absolutely need. And I don't think I've come to you before with those, but can I present those three first, and, because I don't hold them on the same category and classification as the rest of the positions.
If you want to do that, go ahead, Mr. LeCours, present them.
So I might ask Paul Smith and Renee Vincent to come forward. It was really a team of three that developed, we knew what our needs were. Unfortunately, unfortunately, Kevin Powell, who is a major influence on, one isn't here now, but the three of them got together and really looked at the needs. Obviously, the planning one, and as you know, I'm bringing the planning position forward at the next commission meeting because it's essential with, with, after your meeting on Saturday, you know, we're moving forward with a process, strategic plan, comprehensive plan. I need to get this person, because this person's going to be, I need to get this person on board as fast as possible. Advertising at the beginning of August, I can hope to get them on maybe October, hopefully in October. If we wait till October, I may not get them on till after the holidays, and we'll be way far along in the planning process. So that's the reason why you're seeing one of them come up. So, if I could have Paul and Renee explain the whole process of the needs and how we came up with these three positions and what essentially they do. And maybe, I think the planning is the most obvious because all the board knows, approved the plans for, for really updating and, and remembering that we can update all of these plans, but we also have an obligation, an obligation by the charter every three years to implement them and be ready to, in essence, audit them every three years. So why don't we start with that one and, and go through the, the needs of each of these three?
So do you want me to focus on the planning position, or kind of how we got here?
How we got there and then start with that one for?
So, myself, Paul, Bob, Tom, we all started working together several months ago, looking at, you know, because we kept identifying needs, and who's doing this and who's covering, you know, covering these different things. And then, you know, Kevin came into the mix as well, as we started identifying some gaps there. So what we, what we tried to do is take a holistic look at, you know, how can we fill the, you know, these gaps that we've really identified? And so the first, you know, that we thought, from our perspective, was probably the most important, was the site construction and permit review and inspections. So, and this function is something that, you know, through transitions of building officials and things like that, that it's just been, and people retiring, that is, is not being met today. And so, we're falling back a lot on using our engineering record for things that, you know, we didn't use to in the past. So, you know, we, we need someone to fill that, that gap, and so we're calling them like a site construction and permit review field inspector. So, you know, if you're, you know, and this could go from simple permits to things like, you know, making sure that, you know, driveways and things, this is really focused more on the horizontal site construction needs, you know, are the pipes that are going in the ground, what's on the site plan that's been approved. So, you know, engineer of record approves something upfront, but then making sure that through the site construction permitting and the actual installation and inspection, that everything is, is meeting the needs, meeting the site plans. So, so that's, that was one need, and we really want that position to be in the building department. If there is overlap, they could also assist in project admin with, you know, helping inspections on, on city projects as well. The next position that we focused on, again, was looking at the, in the planning department, and looking at a position that can really, again, it would, this position is really envisioned to not only assist me with comprehensive planning, strategic planning, helping us stay, get into and stay in the pipeline through funding with like Ford, Pinellas, and MPO and grants, a focus really on transportation planning. And then, what I, I use the term kind of bridging the gap between the, you know, the kind of the traditional public works and the urban planning side of things, and making sure that we're getting good public outreach upfront in these projects. I think Distin's a good example of that, where, you know, we're using consultants to do that right now. But, you know, again, managing those projects from beginning to end, it would definitely have a sustainability component. So that, so we focused in on a principal planner, and again, that, that is really more of a project management position as well. Again, could help with project admin where there's crossover, you know, you know, maybe we take, you know, we take projects kind of at the beginning of things where we need the public input and the buy-in, and then they transition more to the, on the construction side over to project admin. So that position is being requested, so it would be an additional principal planner. And then the third position really is recognizing that the additional workload and responsibilities that have come along with the RO plant and with the additional sustainability functions that Mr. Smith has been, you know, fielding now for quite some time, is the, you know, is the need for really an assistant director, you know, he has a large department, I think, what, like 120 personnel? And so, without an assistant director, and, you know, if he goes down, then, you know, we have an issue, so I'll stop there. That was the genesis of how we got where we were, and it was a group effort, and we recommended to Mark that, you know, that these be a priority for this year's budget. So with that, I'll stop, and I guess we can answer questions about the individual projects, or the individual positions, I'm sorry.
Well, it's tight thing, Mr. Smith, you going to say anything?
Just here for support, thanks.
Served me up well for that.
Ms. Vincent, can I ask you a couple questions?
Sure.
The, the principal planner to work with special projects, and can you tell me what involvement is going to have in regards to sustainability?
Yes, so that person would definitely be, so, we've been providing some staff support to the sustainability committee now. The biggest thing that the planning department needs to be able to do with, to help the sustainability effort, is really more at the policy level, so ensuring that when there's a sustainability action plan adopted, that those policies, the things that we need to implement that, work their way into the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan, our land development codes, and anything else that comes along the way. So, this position, you know, would be integral into helping make those things, you know, happen and carrying them out and ensuring that, you know, it filters down from our policies to our land development codes and get implemented. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, the, the position that you requesting, the public service assistant, what services is going to provide?
Yeah. Thank you, Paul Smith, public services director. I'd first like to emphasize, this is not a new idea. This position actually existed in some form or other in the past. It's only been in the recent years with the promotion of Bob to his own department that I haven't had that support. And in fact, when I joined the city, there were actually three administrative positions in utilities, and now it's down to me and a shared executive assistant. So, I think we're pretty light in terms of coverage, and particularly during emergency events, and if in the event I get sick or I'm out. But also for succession planning, we need to be thinking about that. It takes usually a couple of years to bring somebody up to a level that they can take over and have your confidence. So those are the primary areas. But also, the sustainability needs have risen. I think we have a whole section of this proposed position that we updated with the city manager to include specific sustainability roles. We have a lot of technical expertise in our department. We have to, because we're, water and sewer regulatory programs usually require engineering, lots of that. So I think it would lend itself well to assist on a technical standpoint to sustainability initiatives.
And we have to remember this position, depending on who we hire, that person could be taking a lot of the activity with sustainability, or that person could take a lot of the other technical things and allow Paul Smith to continue his job in sustainability and where he's gone. So it's a two, depending, depending who you hire and how it goes, probably both of them are going to be involved in it. But again, all the stuff you've seen and the good work, and I want to thank Paul because I know it was skeptical with the sustainability committee and others, it was skeptical, the process we're using and putting Paul Smith and going it, and I think, I know he's proven himself kind of wide, because I hear the county managers and the, and the cities that have sustainability's, comp- managers and the, and the cities that have sustainability's complement us on our sustainability team up there. And whenever you hear any of this talk that we're behind some other cities and stuff, that, that, that can't be brought to you in fact, because it's, it's not true. Paul Smith is respected of all the sustainability coordinators and the city managers who have those coordinators, very well respected, works well with them. We've, now we've got somebody with a county that we're beginning to work with and stuff. So again, this could be, this could be Paul, this could be his assistant, it's probably going to be a combination of both, to lend the time and give, you know, the sustainability, the attention that it deserves, which is why important that two of these major positions have a major sustainability component in them.
Thank you. So in essence, we have two positions to support the sustainability, is that what you're telling me?
Yes. And that was the plan, again. This was all in place, going in place before we had the situation come up with the request for sustainability. And these positions are irregardless, whether you make a sustainability coordinator, whether you make a sustainability director, that has no effect on these position, three positions and a lot of, a lot of what they're going to do. It, it doesn't have an effect if, if you plan to do something else, that doesn't lend to the duties that these positions are going to do.
Mr. LaCouris, I know that Kevin is not here, Kevin Powell is not here, the...
He wishes he could be, but he unfortunately can't.
But I, the construction field inspector, is he going to be able to support the projects that Mr. Robinson is working on, those big projects? We have some projects that the contractor's not using the right equipment or not using the right supplies or materials. Is he going to be able to look at that and make sure that we are getting what we pay for?
Bob?
Yes.
Get that four minutes and make sure your time.
Let me, yeah, start the clock. So I think the idea for that position is to be able to keep an eye on the, the private projects, the developer type projects. Whereas my position is focused on city projects and making sure those are run and the city's getting their money's worth. I think there could be some overlap, and I think those two positions could back each other up. But I think specifically this is trying to fill two different positions, two different functions.
Okay.
But, I mean, I think the short answer is yes, it could. I mean, we, we have a definite need in building. That's why we wanted the position in the building department. We're recognizing that there is overlap in the, in the duties and responsibilities, you know, one is, you know, I guess, like, you know, Bob said, it's working, you know, focused on private development, you know, whereas, you know, project admin is really focused on city projects. But, you know, site construction is site construction. So there, you know, there is an opportunity there to backfill, you know, and cross train as necessary.
Thank you. Well, Mr. LaCouris, I personally support your request on those three positions. But also I want to talk a little bit about another position, which is very, very critical and very important, not only to me, but to our security. I'm sure you all remember what happened to the city of Oldsmobile, the water plant that was compromised a couple months ago. I had, I got some information that I'd like to share with everybody on cyber attack crimes that we got, that we get here in Tarpon Springs. I got example only for two weeks on one router. And keep in mind, we've got 60 routers in Tarpon Springs. And this information is only for two weeks on one router. We found 333 viruses. 13,809 hackers were blocked. 27,849,000 software programs hackers that were trying, that were blocked. 69, excuse me, 65,960 militias website trying to compromise our website. 25,887 spam emails were blocked. So if you multiply that times 60, that will tell you how many attacks that we got, just on two, on two weeks. So this is, today we're living in a very, in a very dangerous situation with cyber attacks. And I want us to make sure that we have the, the manpower, we have the expertise that we need, Mr. LaCouris and my fellow commissioners, to make sure that we prevent those kind of security attacks. It's very, very important. And I'm sure every other position is in sport as well, but I think security comes first. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Just make a quick comment on your suggestion. There's a couple of things I, I don't know right now off the top of my head is, what do we have in our current IT staffing? I do believe from Tarpon Springs, we're well above and advanced compared to the local cities. Suzanne can confirm that or not, but based on what I can see, I know we, we've had some forward-thinking individuals in the commission before in the past, and I'm grateful for that, to implement an IT team that's the size that it is and what's been done. So I would like some more information on that before I could, I'd say yea or nay or anything along those lines. And then I guess the other question would be, is from my personal experience in the private sector, is that a lot of softwares end up doing a lot of that same work as well, too. So I guess I would, I would just ask Suzanne if you can elaborate a little bit for me.
Sure. Hi, Suzanne Linton, Director of Information Technology. We currently have one IT person at the police department to cover police and fire 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That is the only position that is allocated there. Obviously, we, that was not viable. So I sent one of the four information technology specialists to the PD. And that, so the whole entire IT staff, and this includes me, is five people for the entire city. We are very blessed that we have some brilliant IT specialists on our team. They, we have been able to retain them. Really, probably the retention was due to the good leadership of Mark LaCouris. They value, they value him very greatly. So we have been able to sustain the city with five IT people, and it hasn't been easy. We're 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we have learned to be very efficient, to manage not by crisis. We, if we do have a crisis, we evaluate the situation and we put in measures so that we don't have a crisis again. And it has worked very well for us until COVID. Once COVID hit and everyone started to work from home, and we were tasked with more security breaches, I'm sure you've seen in the news. Cybersecurity hacks from Russia and China, and obviously the water system hacks with our SCADA systems forced us to dive very deep into our security. And I am pleased to report that we are one of the only cities in Florida that has not been compromised. I have been here eight years, and we have never once had any type of compromise in the eight years that I've been here. I spend the majority of my day keeping the city safe. That's what I do. I go through all the servers, the firewalls, the routers. I look for different, different compromises that are happening at any given time. I have to scour the internet to view and read everything that's happening throughout the world, patching all of the computers and servers every day to make sure that we are not vulnerable. We desperately need IT staff to keep us safe. We desperately need it. We, I do not have a number two. I have IT specialists, and then we have a police computer coordinator. So I desperately, I, I did ask for a position enterprise administrator, which would be my number two. If anything happened to me, that person could take over. And then I did ask for two additional information technology specialists to actually, we have so many projects that all of the departments want. And if you look in the last five years, information technology has grown exponentially. Everything everyone does is technology-based, and we are tasked with supporting that throughout the entire city. So in order to implement all of these new technological advancements that everyone wants, in, including the cybersecurity, different things that we have to do. And, and yes, it is, it is a lot of software-based, but you, you need a set of eyes on that software to be able to look at the threat and mitigate that threat before it becomes a huge issue. So we need staff. We have not hired any IT staff members additional in five years. And we are at a point now where we really need the extra help. And if you have any questions?
So it's about $76,000 loaded, is that a good estimate?
For?
Benefits and salary for what you're asking for?
For the IT enterprise administrator?
Yeah, so that would be like a cybersecurity person, second in command?
That's correct.
Someone that would be, okay, so?
That's minimum. I'd probably want to bring that person in probably about 80, 85,000.
Is that loaded or is that salary?
Um, that's salary.
Okay, so then you're another 17% on top of that?
Mm-hmm. The IT specialists, they come in at about 55.
Okay, so it's about $100,000 a year then for the enterprise administrator?
Yes.
Okay. So from, from your assessment, do you feel the city's at risk right now? Obviously, you're not going to prevent everything.
Right.
I mean, I know, we could do everything in the world to prevent a cyber attack, but it's not going to prevent everything. I mean, I, I get it. The risks that are out there compared to where we're staffed today, is that something that you feel that would, we're at a disadvantage currently?
Yes, and I, I believe the biggest risk that my department is facing right now is losing staff to bigger salaries at different cities and counties.
Sure.
The job market is, is unbelievable right now. We, we get calls all day long from headhunters, and they're offering us about 40, 40 to 60,000 more than what we make right now.
Sure. Yeah, and that's going to be every department. I know it's the same situation with the, the current job market.
Yes.
Again, we appreciate everything you do as a whole. I know there's a lot that happens on the day-to-day. Tom, it may say something different, but you know, we all know you do a great job with everything. So I would like to look more into this as a whole. I think it's important, just as the discussion came up, again, information technology, it's not a fun glamorous, oh, I'm sorry.
It's not.
The job, the job can be fun and glamorous, but like from a, from a budget standpoint, it's not a fun and glamorous budget standpoint where you're like, but I mean, you have one compromise, it could wreck a city for many, many dollars, and it could wreck a city publicly, it could wreck, I mean, from a, just a perception standpoint as well, too. So I would like some more information on this. I'm not like 100% there yet that I'm ready to sign off on this one, but I think that's a great idea. Mark, so is that something we could look at further on your end, what that could look like overall? So again, I know it's, it's not a fun position to say, yeah, let's just put a bunch more money in IT. But I do understand that you need IT with everything. We have iPads and we have all this stuff loaded into it, right? So it's pretty incredible. We wouldn't really probably have, have that ability if you all weren't here. So I'm going to jump real quick to, to Paul and Renee, if that's fine.
Sure.
So I just want to, for further clarification, Paul and Renee, that there are, okay, there, so Mayor, are we stopping at nine, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any interest in moving us a little bit later to like 9:30 at all or to get through this one at least?
I have a suggestion, Vice Mayor. Can I?
Yeah, I'm the mayor right now, actually, so.
Oh, okay, chairman, yeah, chairman. Obviously, we're kind of out of time tonight. There's so many different, different positions to discuss. I think we should just get a quick consensus on the big three that our city manager brought forward, and then we can probably kick off the next work session going detail by detail with the new positions and the possible sustainability coordinator. Just because there's, there's so much to discuss in the next nine minutes. I haven't spoken yet. Commissioner Terri Pannie hasn't spoken yet. Commissioner Vaticiottis hasn't spoken yet.
For myself, I mean, if you don't mind me speaking, Vice Mayor Carr, I'd like to at least have about five minutes so I can share my thoughts with everybody that's sitting out here right now. I don't want to just walk away from here without saying anything. I think that leaves questions in the staff's minds about where does Vaticiottis sit on all of this. So I think for me, it's important for them to understand where I sit on all of this.
Okay. My, my two cents is I would just propose picking this whole conversation back up at our next meeting. I mean, because five minutes, you know, for me, five minutes for Commissioner Vaticiottis, Commissioner Donovan. Yeah, like a 20 minutes. Yeah, I mean, next thing you know, you're just... And then it's still not going to be enough, in my opinion. City manager, any suggestions on this one that you want to take individually as each commissioner?
We can kick this off, we can kick this off. Again, but, yeah, I mean, I mean, I think we got a lot more discussion to do.
Right.
On these, and it probably will take more than just 20 minutes or so. But again, we're here at the, we're here at the will of the board, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would like to wait for the mayor to come back to officially finalize this, but there are, I have plenty of questions about these staff positions. I think I could...
Well, again, I didn't think we were going, I thought we were dealing with the, the three first, and then we're, we kind of jumped from not hearing everybody on the three positions and jumped into another position on the next level.
Right, proposed.
In my presenting you levels of the positions, we kind of jumped from that into a position from this list instead of the three.
Okay. So, I mean, with this, I don't have enough time to ask my questions. I don't think within six minutes even to get to the end. So I think it's best to go ahead and finish this on the next budget workshop at the end of the day.
I don't have any questions. I just want to share the thoughts. I mean, I'm saving my questions to later.
Yeah, but you could send an email to everybody if you wanted to on that aspect. Townsend has, Commissioner Terri Pannie has thoughts, I have thoughts, and Commissioner Donovan has thoughts on them as well, so.
Well, we'll wait for the mayor, but I'll be honest with you, it's not fair for us to spend 20 minutes on the mayor's comments and just leave us hanging. If that's not an issue with this commission, that, that's fine, but that's the way I see it.
And that's how the workshops are, are working, and we have multiple scheduled workshops. So the next workshop's scheduled for next Thursday, about nine days from now. Mayor, we've had some discussion while you're gone.
Yes, sir.
About just the time constraints that we're running into tonight and, and starting the, resuming the rest of the salary discussions for the three proposed, I'm sorry, resuming this, the proposed positions and the potential new positions at the next meeting.
Okay.
Just because we don't feel we have enough time to ask the questions.
Just one thing to remember, I'm still bringing, I don't want to delay another meeting, that planning position. So I am bringing that forward with, I get it, I am bringing that forward Tuesday night, which is two days before that meeting, so.
What do you think if we decide, make a decision on the three positions that the city manager is requesting to make sure he can operate the business? After all, the, the principal planner, we gave Ms. Vincent many things to do, including the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan. We need to give her help to do that.
I need to, I need to ask...
Can't vote on it tonight anyways.
No, it's just a suggestion.
That's, that's, so my thinking is, is we haven't really, the whole board hasn't really had an opportunity to discuss this. And I don't think that it's going to help to extend the meeting 15 or 20 minutes.
Yeah.
So my thinking would just be to pick the whole discussion back up at our next budget meeting.
Okay.
That's my thought.
That's fine, sure. What's your take on that?
No, I, I, I just wanted five minutes to express my thoughts, but Vice Mayor Carr said everybody's got their thoughts that they want to express, and it looks like we don't want to go past nine o'clock. And even because of that, I, I don't have any problem with the positions that we're talking tonight. I, I had a conversation with the city manager today about how I would like to approach it. Not anything specific, but how I would like to approach it. But that can wait till later. I don't think it would be appropriate, I think, as Commissioner Terri Pannie said, to give the city manager an indication on the preference of the three positions without the entire board at least having some say on it. I know the principal planner's scheduled for the 27th anyway. anyway and, um, and I'll have a memorandum to him about, um, we also have, uh, Sustainability Committee Chairperson, Dory Larson gave us a memorandum on that. I wanted to at least touch on that this evening, but that's not going to happen. But I'll deal with that with a memorandum tomorrow, uh, to the city manager and then I'll share that copy you on that. So, um, I just want to make sure that the staff knows that I don't have an objection from anything that has been presented tonight as far as, uh, positions. I just want to figure out how we're going to do it. That's all. And, and I'm not talking about the three positions. I'm talking about everybody else's requests that were made and, and I'd also had asked Ms. Linton a couple of times about some additional help for, uh, IT in the past. So, I, I don't have any issue with that. I know you need it, given what we went through with COVID and everything. So, um, thank you.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Donovan, do you have any, uh, any comments? I know you were talking when I walked out.
Uh, yeah, no worries. I, um, I'm, I'm good to just pick this up where we left off. I mean, 8:59 right now. So...
All right. So, uh, the time is 8:58 and the, uh, the work session's adjourned.